Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eastern Carver County Schools Virtual Town Hall. I'm Dave Schwartz. Before I introduce the panel, let me explain how this meeting is being conducted. Residents have logged on to an online meeting and they're chatting with our moderators. Those moderators are sending me questions from residents that I will read off the tablet computer here in front of me. I may also ask follow-up questions or ask the panel for more clarification. Now let me introduce the people who are here tonight to answer your questions. Lisa Anderson is the Chair of the Board of Directors for Eastern Carver County Schools. Jim Balk is the Superintendent. DeeDee Karing is the Director of Finance and Operations. Clint Christopher is the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. To get started, Board Chair Lisa Anderson has a brief introductory statement. Lisa?
Thank you, Dave. Good evening. The school board's top priority is to provide exceptional education for our students at the best value for our taxpayers. We already spend less per pupil than comparable districts, yet our student achievement ranks among the best in the state. On November 3rd, our voters will decide on two referendum questions for our schools. This referendum is about maintaining our successes and being able to meet future challenges. Question one asks voters to renew an existing levy and approve an increase of $450 per pupil. The additional revenue will be used in three ways. First, it will maintain the investments we have made in our curriculum to provide exceptional personalized learning to all of our students. In addition, these funds will help maintain current class size and provide the funding necessary to hire teachers for our growing student enrollment. Second, the additional funds will prevent a budget gap. Over the past six years, we have trimmed our budget by $8 million because the state funding has not kept up with the rate of inflation. We have lived within our means and we have not asked for additional dollars from local taxpayers for operations since 2006. Without this funding, we will face very tough choices to increase class size and lay off school staff. Finally, this new revenue will allow us to open and operate new facilities proposed in the next question. Question two is a $66.7 million bond and it has six parts, including a new elementary school, two plots of land, one for the new school and the other for future school site, additions to two existing elementary schools, a pool and multipurpose facility, both of which will be used for education purposes during the school day, and finally, maintenance and repairs for our older buildings to ensure that they are operational for years to come. While there is a tax increase for both questions, there will also be a significant tax decrease due to retiring debt. Thus, if both questions are approved, the average-priced home in our district will see a total tax increase of only $13.80 per month. That's 166 per year on a $300,000 home. Please go to 2015vote.org to find more details. Dave, thank you so much for joining us and helping us facilitate this community conversation.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for having me. Jim, we'll start with you, the first question. We're hearing a lot about a pool and a dome as part of all this. Why do you need them?
Well, Dave, the primary purpose there is our growing middle school enrollment. And when you couple that with a lack of physical education space at two of our three middle schools, those spaces are needed. Starting first with Pioneer Ridge, we would add a pool over at Pioneer Ridge. That would increase their indoor teachable space and would also allow us to have consistent curriculum in the aquatics area across all three middle schools in our district. In addition to that, we're looking at a multipurpose facility at our Chaska Middle School, East Middle School. That facility has half of the gym space. So this would provide that kind of space for those students on a daily basis. We're not meeting current needs with the current enrollment and with our growing elementary enrollment, those needs are going to increase. We have three additional uses though, Dave, for those two facilities that will be used and primarily used for instructional purposes. One is our co-curricular teams after school will use both spaces. Two, youth athletics in our community will use those spaces after those co-curricular teams are done in the evening. And we also would like to introduce those spaces to our community members. Things like walking in the multipurpose facility, even when youth athletics or co-curriculars are using those spaces in the evening, lap swim at the pool at Pioneer Ridge. So again, primary use instructional during the day for our middle schools and to provide consistent curriculum across the district.
Let me follow up with this because there is already a pool in the district, so why another one?
We actually need, as I said, for the instructional piece of the day at Pioneer Ridge, a second pool to make sure that we have consistent curriculum across the district. If you look at our co-curricular teams after school, Dave, we have four of them. And we are out of space and we need that additional space for the competitive teams also. And our pool is 40 years old. It's six lanes. We can't hold more than a dual competition at it right now. And so that enhancement would benefit our co-curricular teams as well as West Express Youth Athletic Association.
All right. Thank you very much. Question about enrollment, DeeDee, this is for you. If the district adds 700 homes over the next few years, will you get more money from those homes?
Sure. Well, Dave, the only way we would get more money would be as if those homes brought in some additional children. Then that would be some additional money in the operating referenda on a per-pupil basis. But generally, when we see new homes coming into our community and in our school district, what that does is raises the total taxable market value of all properties. And what that does then is spreads the tax that the school district has across a broader base, thus lowering the taxes for all homeowners and property owners based on what our referenda or what our taxes are for our community.
Lisa, this question is for you. The community passed two questions in 2013. What were they for?
So it is true that our community was extremely generous to us two years ago. Those funds were specifically earmarked for security for our current schools and also for technology to enable our curriculum. When I said that we didn't ask for additional funding since 2006, we did have operations piece of that two years ago, but that was not new money. That was only renewing an existing operation fund. So we did not ask for additional funding for operating our buildings at that time.
All right. Clint, let's bring you in the mix now. The average student, what will the average student see from the additional money provided in question one?
Well, question one is really about a strong academic program. And so what that will help do is maintain appropriate class sizes for our students and for our staff and to give them the attention each student deserves with exceptional personalized learning. It also allows us to continue to provide professional development for our staff and continue to grow their skills. And also it's to maintain appropriate curriculum, programs, and services that really help all of our students be future-ready.
All right. Question from a viewer, when will school boundaries be changed?
I can talk about that, Dave. We had a group pulled together, in fact, Lisa was on that group, for the past two years to take a look at boundaries. And they kind of went into a hiatus now until the community decides what are our future facilities going to look like? Because the boundaries will look very different if the referendum is not approved in November than they would if it is approved. So that decision now is kind of on a holding pattern, so to speak. And we will come back to that once the decision has been made on November 3rd. And we will pull back together a capacity task force. Clint and DeeDee will actually co-chair that group. We'll have two or three board members on there. There'll be staff, parents on there. And they'll take a look at the boundaries, one way or the other, whether the question passes or the questions pass or they don't pass, and come up with new boundaries to be revealed to the public, probably in about March or April for some additional input then at that point, so they can hear from the public how they feel about the new proposed boundaries. Then that task force will go back to work with that input and come back to the school board, the full school board, with a recommendation in June. And whatever that recommendation is and whatever the board approves, will not, if it's an approved question, will not come to fruition until the fall of 2017 when the new buildings and the additions would be open.
All right. Question about the East Union School. If you open a new elementary school in Carver, what will happen with East Union?
David, I'd be happy to answer that. When we look at our current capacity for all of our elementaries and the number of students we can really adequately serve within those facilities with a successful vote on November 3rd, adding the additional elementary at 720 student capacity plus 300 additional students in the additions to our two elementaries in Victoria and Clover Ridge, that will put our capacity within about 40 students of our projected enrollment at that time. And that's keeping East Union open and servicing students. So at this point, based on our current enrollment and our growth, we anticipate that school is still servicing students.
And David, our enrollment projections have been within about .8 tenths of 1% off. So we're really close on our projections right now. So as Clint said, that capacity is probably going to be close to being maxed out, even keeping East Union open.
Okay. You're asking for a renewal of $379 per student and an additional 450 per student? Sounds like an increase of more than 100%. Someone is asking. Can you explain?
Well, actually, we have another referenda that's passed that Lisa mentioned earlier for eight, over $800. So it's not 100% increase on that. But the other thing to keep in mind is that we have a budget of over $100 million. So this increase of $450 per student really equates to about 4.5% of our total income. So it's not 100% increase. Most of our funding is from the state, but with our operating referendas as well, this would be about a 4% increase to our total revenue.
Someone asks, why isn't the bond split into more choices?
I can start with that. I don't know, maybe Lisa wants to add something to it. We actually spent a lot of time, Dave, working with our community over the last three years getting input on both aspects and specifically on the bond, the different components of the bond. And so in our surveys, two of them conducted by the board, one in February, one in May, in public forums, in focus groups, in listening sessions, the feedback that the board received was basically this, keep the questions simple and please ask for what you need succinctly. And so based on that, we even tested multiple questions and support levels were about the same, no matter if it was more than one question, two, three, or four questions. And so listening to that feedback, the board really pulled together and said, it looks like two questions is the route if we're going to follow what our community has provided us with input so far.
And at the end of the day, what we really want to do is try and resolve as many of the needs as we can right now, so we can just really get back to the business of educating our kids.
The bond is for $66.7 million. Can you explain how we can afford that with no tax increase?
Sure. I can take that one. So we have debt that's expiring, and Lisa mentioned that in her opening statement. But the bonds, for instance, from the Chaska High School, they're 20 years old. They are falling off and reducing our overall debt payments by about $3 million. So with that reduction, even with an addition for new school, we can actually lower the overall debt payments that our taxpayers will be making. So reduction in debt due to expiring debt coming up. So if you want, we can pull up chart two and that will show the tax decrease that we see in fiscal year 2017 will structure the bonds in a manner that will mirror the existing debt that's there. So as you can see, the blue portion of that is our existing debt lowers in 2017. And even with the added debt, the red bars, you can see that it'll mirror that but decrease naturally as our debt falls off in the future as well.
So DeeDee, what then are people to believe that if you're asking for this money now and it passes, why it won't come up again in another couple of years to need more funds?
Sure. Well, right now, we anticipate, as Clint mentioned, that our enrollment should pretty much mirror what we have. Unless there's a huge increase in our residents and our new communities having more homes being built, then we may have a different scenario. But right now, we're not seeing that we will have a major spike in increase, that we'll continue with that. And we'll make do with what we have and then come back to the voters only if it's absolutely necessary.
Dave, I can add something to that. If we look at housing, single housing permits in our four communities over the last two or three years, we are averaging right around 400 permits per year. And it's stayed, it has stayed very steady right now. And our cities aren't indicating that that's going to blip up or increase significantly. So as DeeDee said, I think on the housing side, unless we see housing permits double in the next 24, 36 months, we should have adequate space for a while. And I'd say on the operating side, we do three- to five-year financial outlooks. And what we're asking for right now is funding that's going to keep us in a good position for that period of time. And then we'll continue to monitor state funding as that goes forward also. But again, the board did thorough homework on both pieces of that before putting the two questions on the ballot.
Okay. Viewer asks, can you put the pool at Chan-Hassan High School?
Well, my quick answer for that, and maybe Clint and DeeDee have something else to add, is from a curricular standpoint, Dave, and to the viewer, it's better to have that pool at the middle school. It's going to be used during the instructional day, maximized during the instructional day, which we think we need to have in order to have that as part of the whole package here today. So it's being placed at the middle school very purposely for the instructional day.
Where, and for people that don't understand, as far as the map of the district, is that more a central location? Is that middle school more of a central location?
Actually, it is. The dead center, according to our Director of Transportation, John Thomas, of the district is Hunter Mark in Minnesota 41. And the pool will not be far off of that, just south of that area. No, excuse me, just north of that area, a mile or so. So it'll be centrally located, as will the dome. The dome will be just south of that central mark in the district, so.
Did you have any of that, DeeDee?
No, I'm just not trying to think of the campus here at Chan High School. I'm not sure that there's actually a good spot to put a pool in addition to that. And as Jim said, typically that pool, when you look across many metro districts and even outstate, a lot of times those pools are located at the middle school because that's where the instruction occurs, is at that middle school level.
Okay. Question from a viewer, have you talked to city governments and what do they think about these proposals?
Well, I can talk about that as well. We've had a great relationship with our communities reviewing all of our plans. We've been in conversations with them all along the way, making sure that we understand the number of housing permits that they have, growth that they see. They've been at number of meetings to talk about that, as well as we've been to their city council meetings as well to talk about our proposals and giving them a better understanding. We have partnerships with all of our communities and want to continue that as well. So, and Jim, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the city councils that we've been to and any support that they have?
A couple of things there, Dave. We meet every quarter, and Lisa's part of that. We have what's called Community Leaders Meeting. And all sorts of subjects are brought up. It's the mayor, a council member, a city administrator, superintendent, and two board members. And so we have ongoing meetings and discussions about, you know, what is the school district working on? What is the city of Chan-Hassan working on? What is the city of Victoria working on, et cetera? And so those meetings have helped us shape the two questions in front of the community for this fall also. And in addition to that, as DeeDee alluded to, we have been in front of all four city councils in the last four weeks to present the referendum in its final form and have gotten good, solid support from them in the initiatives. And good support from the city administrators, who are actually the staff that do a lot of the planning for the cities, so.
And in addition to that, the, all four of those communities, all four of the cities did come, whatever it was, two years ago when we started the capacity task force and really launched this conversation when they started talking about housing starts and where they were going and where they were going to build. So we have been, again, blessed with really great communities and feel like we're really in lockstep with them and trying to meet their housing needs because people who want to move in want good schools. So they've been very supportive. We're blessed to have them.
A question from a viewer asking, can you build onto existing schools instead of building a new one?
Well, we are going to build on two elementaries. In fact, what'll happen, Dave, with this construction is the elementaries on the west side of our district will end up being on the larger side. There'll be housing capacity of about 700 to 750 students, which we probably wouldn't want to get much larger than that because then you're going to start increasing some overhead costs with assistant principal type of roles and whatever. So there is a little bit of a combination going on here. We're going to do some additions to address some of that enrollment. The addition of the physical education space, both the multipurpose and the pool, is, are going to be built on to currently existing buildings. And the one new piece is the brand-new elementary, which we need again for enrollment growth.
Correct from Clint, I think you mentioned, you talked about enrollment projections. Someone asks, how do you come up with those projections?
Well, we had a demographer that did a study a few years back for the district and they look at birth rates, they look at housing starts, and they come up with their model. They gave a couple of different projections. If growth is really high, you could see enrollment at this level. Or if it comes in a little more flat, then you could see it at this level. So, you know, what DeeDee has done, what we've done here is kind of looked at both of those models and come up with a hybrid between the two of those. And again, I think as I mentioned earlier, with that hybrid that we've used the last couple of years, that projection, we've been about 8 tenths of a percent within that projection, so pretty close.
Someone asks, what are the plans for the community to be able to use the pool and the multipurpose facility?
As I said earlier, what we'd like to do is through our community education kind of branch of the school district, open up those facilities. I'm not sure if the viewers are familiar with the Savage Dome, for example. Kids are over there practicing soccer, lacrosse, whatever it happens to be. They drop a net down so that seniors and other community members can come in and actually do lap walking while that other activity is going on. We'll be looking at doing very similar things through our community education program. Also, in the case of the pool, we do know there's a lot of demand from not just being used in the instructional day, but our co-curricular teams. But as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at trying to add some lap swim time. We know that there is a segment of our community that really enjoys that type of recreation or physical fitness to take place for them personally. And so we'll be looking at trying to create that kind of avenue. We're not going to get into teaching swimming lessons. Our communities do a very, very good job of that. And during the instructional day, we plan to just teach some water safety with the regular water curriculum that we have.
With community members using these places, the pool, the dome, does that help at all offset costs of maintenance? Or do you get any sort of benefit from funds from that?
Absolutely, we do. I can let DeeDee answer that. But part of our youth association piece is rental fees that'll come in to help offset that usage cost.
Yeah. And we already know in conversations with some of our youth groups that there is a need for that. They're currently driving to those locations like the Savage Dome, Orno, and wherever, and they're spending their dollars there. So we know, for instance, like CC United, our soccer association, is spending well over $100,000 a year in rental in other communities. And we'd like to be able to provide that here. And that fund, those funds would help offset our operational costs. In addition, we know that West Express, the local swim club, also would be able to use multiple pools to make sure that there's enough activities for our kids. And again, that rental would go and offset any of the additional rental, or excuse me, operational costs of the pool.
Let's talk a little about the building maintenance plan. What kind of projects are in the building maintenance plan?
Sure. We have about $7.5 million set aside in the bond to talk about deferred maintenance or address the deferred maintenance. And if you pull up chart number three, you can see the deferred maintenance that we're talking about. So the largest portion of that is for roofing projects. We have a number of schools such as Chan-Hassan, or Chaska High School, Bluff Creek, that need roofing. Most important is Chan-Hassan Elementary, which has about a 45-year-old roof. But roofing, HVAC, hardscape, which is pavement and sidewalks, all of those items would be included in that. And we've done a 10-year look at our projects. So we know what is coming up that is going to be needing maintenance, whether it's due to the life cycle or it's due to wear and tear. And so we have a plan in place and we'll move forward with that. And we have spent about $10 million over the last three, four years making improvements on our building. So we're always constantly looking at that and making sure that we're taking care of our community's prized assets of our schools.
We have someone who identifies himself as a supporter of the school district, wants to know what are the best ways to promote this referendum. And of course, we understand that you cannot advocate for the referendum here, but what are the best ways to promote it? If you can answer that.
Well, I'll suggest a couple of ways and then others can chime in. I think first of all, there's great information, Dave, out on our district website. A lot of information. People can drill down, as DeeDee was just talking about deferred maintenance. How much is that Chan Elementary roof going to cost to replace? What's the estimated cost? So there's a tremendous amount of information out there on the website itself and it's And people can click on that and probably spend hours there. I think in addition to that, we've sent out some school reports. We've sent out a legal mailer out to our property owners. I know that we have Online 112, which is an electronic communication, out to our residents and parents. So there's been a lot of tools that we've tried to provide as much information as we can because we always know that it's 51% receiver and 49% sender. So we're trying to access a variety of avenues. We've been out in the community, Clint, DeeDee, and I, along with board members. I think right now, we're up to about 30 community presentations on the referendum information. But there's some really good pieces on that district website, some short videos that can encompass great information, explain all the pieces in the referendum, so.
And the best way thus far is to vote.
Very true. All businesses look for ways to cut costs and run their businesses efficiently. What have you at the school district done to be most and more efficient?
I can start with that one, Dave, and I'm sure others will join in. Our finance director will probably join in. Over the last six years, I think Lisa mentioned in her opening statement, we have trimmed $8 million worth of costs to our school district, capping those costs, keeping it lower. In addition to that, we have also spent down fund balance to the tune of just under $1.5 million over that same six-year time period. This year, the seventh year, we will trim fund balance or spend fund balance by about a million and a half. We're at our end of the line with fund balance, though, in order to cash flow the district and keep it on a good financial stead. So we can't go into that zone into the future without risking, in the private sector, they'd say bankruptcy, but it'd be similar to that and where the state would come in and start monitoring our expenditures. But in addition to that, we have a number of things that we've done to monitor costs and I don't know, maybe you want to...
Yeah, sure. Well, we've, as Jim said, done a number of things to keep costs low. That would include having partnerships with our cities to do things like field maintenance and taking care of our outdoor property. We've been a partner with Carver Scott, now the Southwest Metro Educational Co-op, so we've been a member of that for years. But things like purchasing and how can we lower costs regarding that, propane for our buses is a number one. But some of the bigger ones include refunding our debt or in your own home would be redoing your mortgage or refinancing your mortgage. And we've done that to the tune of about $17 million that we've been able to save taxpayers. That also helps with, when we looked at that debt chart, of lowering that debt overall. In addition to that, we are self-funded in our dental insurance. That's been very successful in our district. And recently, we became self-funded with our health insurance. We're seeing great success with that in lowering our costs and maintaining costs and having some self-driven directives as that goes forward and still maintaining the benefit for our employee.
We have another viewer question here, wants to know why he can't vote for just one of the questions. Why are the questions contingent on another in the bond?
I can start with that one. I think it's fairly straightforward. In order to operate the spaces, and again, I referenced Lisa's opening statement, part of that referendum cost, that new cost of $450, Dave, one-third of that, little over one-third of it, is to help us with the overhead costs of opening those spaces, the principal, clerical positions, shoveling snow in the winter, mowing lawn. In the case of the pool, lifeguards, pool attendants, locker room attendants, all that cost that isn't directly in the classroom. So in order to open those spaces, we need question one to pass. And so we've tied those two questions. 20 years ago in the district, when Chaska High School was up for the vote, the current building, the two questions were not tied. And the community passed the bond referendum, didn't pass the operating question. So at that time, when the Chaska High School was ready to open, we moved kids all over in the district and closed what is currently Chaska Middle School West for a period of time until the community approved the operating funds. Once they saw the crowded classrooms and probably some of the chaos with buses running all over town to make sure kids had places to go to school, they turned right around the next fall and passed an operating question. So they do have to be linked. And more often than not, when you see bond-issue questions now, you'll see an operating question tied to it and either be the first or the second question, doesn't make any difference. But both have to pass in order for them to be put into place.
We have another enrollment question. If enrollment keeps growing, will you face another enrollment crunch in a few years? What is the long-term plan?
Go ahead. I'll start with that. You know, again, when you look at, if we have a successful passage of the referendum, you know, what we'll build and what we'll start housing students in 1718, we'll be very close to that capacity at the end of the year. be very close to that capacity at that time. So, we're really building for the need, and then we'll have to continue to monitor those projections. But one of the pieces that will go along with that is the new elementary that's proposed in Carver is also being built so that in the future, should we have some more rapid growth than what we expect, we can add on to that facility, because it already has a larger core space, and that'd be your cafeteria and some of those other pieces that you can't just add on additional classrooms. You have to incorporate that core space as well. So, that'll be set up for that at that time.
And Dave, the other thing I was going to mention is we continue to work with the cities, as we talked earlier, about monitoring our building permits that are going on in our cities. We're going to do a demographic study again this December. We should have December, January, have some more information. So, we continue to make sure that we are on track, know where we're going with where we expect the enrollment to be, look at the birth rates and look what's going on in our cities. So, we're trying to keep up with that and stay on top of it. So, as Clint said, unless something major happens and something changes, we do have a little bit of a fallback plan of adding on to that new school should we need to do that.
Question from a viewer, how do your administration costs compare with other school districts? And they also ask with other businesses.
I can start with that question, and maybe others want to chime in, Dave. Actually, I can't probably speak from the business standpoint, just from the stand, we just don't often compare ourselves to that sector. We're very different, and there's lots of different business models out there, from manufacturing to service to retail to whatever. On a school district basis, though, if you look at our per pupil expenditures, on a per pupil basis, per student basis, there's what's called the Minnesota Profile Data, that Minnesota Department of Ed keeps. There's 332 public schools, and our administrative costs for both the district office and for building level, so principals, district office being people like Clint, Didi, myself, human resources, in fact, the school board, they rank in the bottom quartile of all the school districts statewide. If you look at the 48 metro school districts, we're also in the bottom quartile of... So, when you look and you break down that cost on a per student basis, how much is the superintendent and the district office costing out of that money that you're spending on a per student basis? We're in the bottom quartile both metro-wise and statewide. In fact, metro-wide, we're in, actually, in the bottom 20%. We fall even closer to the bottom piece of it. Again, I can't answer. I apologize for the viewer. We don't have any business comparisons that I'm aware of, but, and it's a different model too.
Can I follow up with this, and for people that don't understand the dangers and the downfalls of being in that bottom quartile? What are they?
Well, there are dangers of being involved in that bottom quartile. First of all, just getting the phones answered and issues resolved, having someone to go to, to respond to your concern as a parent, or as a staff member, or as a community member. So, when you run those numbers thin, your response level is probably, in my mind, Dave, the most critical thing that doesn't take place. That response time is slowed down tremendously. I think, secondly, it's just general work that needs to get done, supervision of staff, reports to the State Department, things of that nature, too. Also, take a backseat, because you just don't have the hands on deck to get everything done on a timely basis.
But going back to some of the budget cuts that we've made over the last six years, that's probably, that's part of the reason why we are in the lower quartile for our administrations, because that's where we have made some of the cuts. But, you know, we need that leadership. You wouldn't get on, you wouldn't get on a plane without a pilot, you wouldn't get on a boat without a captain. So, we absolutely need leadership. We're fortunate that we have leaders at all levels in our schools, and so, even though we have great leadership here and we're blessed with them, we've had lots of people step up to the plate and help lead our schools.
You talked about those budget cuts, and I know we've touched on this a little bit, but where have those budget cuts been made over the past couple of years?
Sure. If we could pull up chart number five, we have a dollar bill that kind of shows how we spend our money as well as where we've made reductions. So, let's first just look at where we spend our money. So, kind of going back to what the last question was, if you look at the upper right-hand side of the screen, you can see that we spend about three and a half cents on every dollar for district and school administration, along with district support at three and a half percent. So, just under, or just right around seven cents on every dollar spent in those two categories. But when we look in the left-hand side, instruction and instructional support, we're spending over 70 cents on every dollar for, in that instruction area where we should be spending money. And as I know Jim has talked about before in a number of our presentations, Governor Palenti, he set that standard at 70 cents, and we've exceeded that the entire time that Jim and I have been here, which has been over five years and probably longer than that. Then if you couple that with the pupil support, which is the 9.8 percent, or eight cents on every dollar, we're spending well over 83 cents on every dollar, just on either direct instruction, instruction support, and then supporting those pupils, the remaining being that 10.5%. So, looking at all of that, then when you look at those kind of orange or colored numbers, combined, we've spent, or we've made budget reductions of about 20% in the area where we are spending the least amount. So, we've made some deep cuts in that administration and district support area. With the instruction and instructional support, we have cut that about 57% of the budget cuts that we've made, but when you have that large of a segment of your budget, you just can't avoid not cutting into that area as well. So, the point of this chart is showing, as Lisa demonstrated earlier in her conversation, is, you know, we've made some cuts in that administrative area. There's just not a lot of room left to do that in.
We've talked about taxes for per household. Is there an effect on businesses? Someone asked, will property taxes for businesses be affected by this referendum?
Yes, they will as well. I don't have a chart just for businesses, but on our website, we do have the tax calculator, and so, property owners, residents, apartment owners, agricultural properties, and commercial and industrial can go online, and we have a tax calculator that they can put in the property value of their business or their home, and it will tell them what the cost is for question one, for question two, and then what the total is, what they can expect, both on an annual and a monthly basis.
And the website is 2015vote.org.
Correct.
Thank you.
You are. You just never know when people are joining in here.
Yeah.
Someone asks, the roof at Chaska High School is leaky. Can you fix it? I don't think they mean actually go out and fix it. I think, will this be fixed?
We don't want any of these. No. You know, flat roofs in Minnesota, I think for most school districts have at some point in time had leaky roofs. But if you'll recall from the deferred maintenance piece that we talked about earlier, we do have a fair amount of money put aside for roofs, and Chaska High School is one of those schools that we will be addressing that as well. Certainly, if we have, in the meantime, if we have leaks, we will be addressing those as well and trying to patch, just to get us along until the roof is completed as well.
Right. Why do we need to renew referendums? If voters approve it, shouldn't that be enough?
Well, we'd like to think that way, but that changed, actually, Dave, back in the early '90s by legislative action. Originally, when referendums were allowed to take place starting in the 1970s through about the mid-1990s, referendums that were once approved did not have to come back to be renewed. Legislators didn't think that that was appropriate. They felt that the community needed to have an opportunity to come back and say, yes, please continue that task, tax, you're spending the money the way we wanted you to spend that money. So, beginning sometime '93, '94, right in there, they put a sunset on all operating referendums. And if you look across the metro area this fall, there's like nine questions, and I think half of them are renewals plus some additional money. So, it's part of the state law right now. You have to go back out and ask.
We talked about this a little bit already, but do you have any analysis of domes and whether they generate revenue or not for a community?
Well, when we were looking at the possibility of adding a multipurpose facility, we did look at them, and in general, it seems that they are at that kind of break-even as far as what they rent those facilities out versus what the operational costs are. So, we've kind of looked at that same effect. However, we know that we're going to be using that dome or that pool during the school day, so we expect that we aren't necessarily going to cover all that cost, because we're going to use that for gym space. It's an educational space. We will have some operational costs, just as we would a gym or a classroom as well. So, not all of it will be covered. If we can get close, that's even more of a benefit to our community and to our school district.
Do you bother having an actual, when you figure in what it'll generate, do you think about a number? Is there a number you need, or is it just whatever you get is extra in the pot?
Well, we anticipate that the dome, for instance, is going to be about $360,000 a year to rent, or to operate, excuse me. We know that some of our youth associations, like as I said earlier, are spending well over $100,000. So, you know, we have an early estimate of maybe around $200,000 a year to begin with that that might generate revenue for the dome, for instance. Pool, different costs, but we anticipate that we'll get some back. First year or two will be, you know, kind of getting it booked and getting it rented and finding of how all that space will be utilized and by those different groups as well.
We talked about this back at the beginning, so for people who maybe haven't joined right from the beginning, someone asks, have you talked about how the new money will be used, and can you briefly explain it again? We've touched on this a little bit before, for someone, maybe you missed it.
Sure. Do you want to?
Yeah, probably the easiest way to look at that additional $450 is in thirds. You think of a third of that money is going to be, again, just through continued growth as we've grown since 2006, and additional classrooms as we've had more students in there. Curriculum, all those training, all of that goes into that third. About a third of that is to help narrow that budget gap, as we have not necessarily gotten the funds from the state to offset inflation over that period of time. And then also, a third of those costs are to operate those facilities if they're approved in question two.
What about for people who don't have kids in the school district? Why should they support this?
Well, that's a good question. I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of services in a community that we pay taxes for that we may or may not use as residents. You know, a couple of good examples, I hope I never have to use fire or police for issues, you know, in our house or wherever it happens to be. There are probably roads in a community or within the state of Minnesota that one will never drive on. But I think what, when you're looking at questions like that, you got to look at the more of a holistic view of what's good for our entire community. What will build good, solid, quality schools? What will build a good, solid, quality community? What will make us attractive to other residents to come into our school district and our four communities that we serve, want to buy, purchase, build homes, raise their families, work here, and have their kids go to school here? And so, I think it's kind of those pieces as a whole community that you have to look at. And I guess the other thing I'd say is, there are multiple generations that are responsible for educating students, and just because you happen to be an empty nester or on the other end of the spectrum, don't have children, or don't have children yet in school, someone has always paid for children going through the school district, and it hasn't just been residing on the shoulders of parents only, and it's really a community effort.
Can you talk about the link between schools and people coming to districts as far as, is there a quantitative relationship that you've seen of school districts becoming better and then people wanting to move to that district?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll touch on that a little bit later, too, but that's one of the goals of the school board. I mean, we really want to be that destination district. You hear about those districts that people want to move to because of the schools, and I think we're well on our way there. This is the piece that we think that we'll get there. I mean, a destination district really needs a rigorous curriculum. I mean, we have that. We have exceptional teachers. And then, it's really adequate facilities. You know, right now, we have many schools that are very overcrowded, and that's a concern of the school boards, is, are we to, are we getting too crowded in order to, for people to want to live here? But one of the pieces we want to look at is that ACT data. Can we pull up that chart? District, chart four? Yep. Yep. And Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the return on investment that we've made?
Sure. I mean, and others can join in here with me, but if you take a look at the investment, the last operating investment the district asked of its residents was in '06. And if you start even back way before that, in 1999, we tested about 70% of our students in the ACT, and we also had a student poverty rate of about 8%, 9% at that time. Both of those factors impact test scores. If you go over to 2014, and it stands the same for 2015, we're at about 24 on our composite average score. And that's with now testing over 90% of the students on the ACT. And having students of poverty, our range now is between 18% to 21% on an annual basis, so we've almost tripled the level of students of poverty. And so, given our student demographics, well, 24, we're not going to rest on our laurels here for the last few years, and we want to see that go up. That's still better than 75% of all students in the nation who take the ACT. Our top 25% at 30 score better than 95%, and our top 10% at 31.7 score better than 98% of the students who take the ACT. So, we think that the return on investments has been good and solid, and it's, people shop more today, Dave, probably than when my wife and I raised our children. They look at test scores, they look at house prices, they look at other community offerings that are available for them, because if they're going to invest that kind of money into a house, they want to make sure there's a return on that value. And so, I would say it's very important to be an attractive district for young families. I can give you a personal example. My son doesn't live in this community, but a good friend of his and his wife bought a house in our school district two years ago, and I shared this with the staff. And the reason they bought it was for all the things that Lisa and I just mentioned, test scores, home value, taxing rates, all of those components. And the young man didn't know that I worked in this district. So, it was really refreshing and fun when my son called me and said, hey, you know, so-and-so, Dad, do you know so-and-so? You don't know him, but here's the reasons why they decided to move to your school district. And it was just, like I said, a very refreshing conversation to have.
Let's go back a little bit. Someone asks about the plan for the 2013 referendum. How is that money being used?
Sure. So, the 2013 referendum was two question. One was an operating referendum for over 829 or 79, I can't remember, per pupil, and so that money was a renewal. So, those funds were used to continue with our day-to-day operations, teachers, et cetera. So, that's part of our general fund. The other part, the technology referendum and secured entrance, or the capital projects referendum, is about $2.45 million. In the first year, last year, for that referendum, we did add secured entrances to all of our schools, so whether we needed to add to the vestibule or whatever, but we added security cameras, we put in visitor management system, we put in door swipes for badging for employees to get in. So, we secured up those buildings as we promised, and then we spent some of the money in 2011 school year on technology as well. So, we have a technology plan, and we've been following the plan, and this current school year, the majority of that $2.45 million is spent on the technology, and you can see on our website where we've spent the money, where the plan is, and moving forward with that in the future.
Someone asks, we've already talked about the positive side of having a dome and a pool. What is the lack of a dome facility and a second pool? What are those problems for our community?
Well, I think right away, it's an instructional issue for us at the middle schools. We do not have enough space. Gym space is inadequate at East, inside space is inadequate at Pioneer Ridge, and without having that pool, we also aren't able to deliver a consistent curriculum across all three middle schools. So, it really, the first and primary piece, Dave, is that instructional day. We will continue then to kind of crimp our co-curricular teams, particularly swimming, into the future without a second pool. And then, our youth athletic associations will still be looking for spaces to use in the evening, and parents and students will drive elsewhere then to do so. So, but again, the major issue there, if they're not built, is for classroom space and the daily use of the building.
What is the correlation between school quality and property values? We talked a little bit about this already, but someone asks, will this referendum, and I'd like to know this as well, increase my property value?
Well, I can, I don't have any recent research on that, Dave, but a piece that I can cite to you is from like, oh, about 15, 20 years ago. USA Today did do a study, and they actually used a variety of cities throughout the United States. and they actually used a variety of cities throughout the United States. And what they found is basically you can walk down the street and one district can be on this side and the other district can be on the other side of Linda Lane or whatever it happens to be, and the house prices vary. And they vary, basically what they found at that time in that study, a long time ago, was based on school district quality. Because the other amenities in the communities were very similar in nature. But I don't have any recent research on that. If you talk to realtors, they will say that same thing though, that houses will sell faster and quicker and at a better value if the district, if the quality of the district is perceived as high.
Looks like we're down to our final question, so anyone can take a stab at this one. Is there a way to reconfigure the space you already have in the district to manage the student growth?
I'll start with that. You know, we're full. And, you know, one of the problems that we're having now, and even some of our buildings, if you look, you know, kind of on paper at Chan Elementary or Bluff Creek, it looks like there's additional space there where we could continue to house students. Chan Elementary has two sections of our early childhood program that we have housed students within that building and also two sections of special education classes. So that's, you know, again, if you take those two sections out, they've got to go somewhere. And there's really no other room to put them. Kinder Academy is a program that we offer to our parents. And that's something that's been at the kindergarten center and as La Academia has continued to grow, that program had to go elsewhere. That went to Bluff Creek. And so that consumed four classroom spaces there. So again, if you continue to grow, you're going to have to eliminate those programs and parents are making choices based on those programs. And again, if you, are we looking at-
We're going to call up chart seven, just to refresh our audience, our viewers. Our enrollment growth is really at the elementary level, is significant at the elementary level. We'll grow about 400 students from the 14, 15 school year when you get out to 18, 19. Our secondary growth will be right between 150 to 200 some students over that same period of time. But as Clint said, you couple that with all-day, everyday kindergarten, that growth and the fact that our buildings are full now, our spaces, the new space is needed.
I want to thank you all for taking part in this town hall meeting tonight. We will conclude now. Remember, there is more information on all of this at 2015vote.org. But before we end our meeting, I want to give Lisa Anderson one more opportunity to make a final statement. Lisa?
Right. Thank you, Dave, and thank you for those of you who are watching tonight. The school board believes that our schools are the heart of our community and that everyone benefits from the investments in our schools. We've talked about it tonight, but realtors would tell you that homes in this district, in any district with strong schools, sell faster and for higher prices. Our goal is to be that destination district, to be the district that parents want to move to because of the quality of the schools. And the board believes that this referendum will help us get there. My fellow school board members and I are committed to staying on the path of academic excellence and fiscal responsibility. I've personally lived in this community for the last 13 years. Both my boys attend Chaska High School. My husband and I chose this district because of the schools, its reputation for exceptional teachers, rigorous curriculum and a strong community support. Please help us to continue that tradition of excellence and remember to vote on November 3rd. Thank you and good evening.